Everybody say hi to the cameras. This is being streamed, so you can go back, I believe, and watch it on YouTube after we're done. And I don't expect any excitement, but who knows? We may have it. First thing I'd like to do is to introduce the town council. The town council is here, and we have the staff here today to meet you. First of all, Vice Mayor Catherine Roy.
Thank you so much for coming. Glad to have you on.
Ernie Bunch, council member. Tom McGuire, council member. Tom Augurton, council member. Paul Elkman. And Dusty Rhodes, who's got the best name in town. I'd also like to introduce the staff who are here today. First of all, our town manager, who is coming up on 25 years of service to the town in March, Carrie Dyret. Doesn't she look young for that amount of stress? Teresa Riza, who is our deputy town manager and our town clerk, and she arranged this today. Luke Kautzman. Adam Stein. Adam Stein is here. Town marshal. Missy Callow, our director of finance, very important. John Cruzweister. Water and Aaron. I put the engineers last because I'm an engineer too. This is the first I know of a meeting like this. It's meant to be very informal. We're not going to have timers or... We are going to have some minutes, but they'll be very, very brief because we want to open the lines of communication with the business community in town, and that's what this meeting is primarily directed to. So the structure's going to be that I'm going to talk for a while and tell you what's going on in town, what the issues are, a little bit of where the town has been, where we're headed. Is this working okay? Am I... Can y'all hear?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we'll have a time for some questions that would be of interest to everybody. If you look at your sign-in sheet, I believe there was a spot on there for you to ask a question, and we'll get ahold of those and try to get information back out on things that may be specific. And at the end of the meeting, we're going to kind of break up and let you talk to people here from council and from staff, or to me, whoever you'd like to, if you have specific issues that may not be appropriate for the large general meeting. First of all, I'd like to say that the merchant and business success is the town's success. We don't have a property tax. We get some money from the state through shared funds, but the majority of the money in town that runs the town comes through sale. We have about a... Oh, so it's called a $13 million general fund. That doesn't include the water companies or some of the Spurcross funds and things like that, but the town really runs on that $13 million. That's what takes care of the building and the staff and the fire department, new fire department. Those all come out of that. A little bit about what's going on now. Water is the big issue in the state. We've got the Colorado River that has been drying up. There's a big negotiation going on between the Department of the Interior and all the states to decide who gets how much water. My holding it too close, too far?
Fine.
And water has been a big issue in this town for quite some time. We bought the water companies, and we are on the trajectory to have that problem area straightened out. We've taken care of much of the deferred maintenance. You've seen trucks working on sewers. You've seen it working on the water system. You've seen we have new equipment in the water treatment plant. We have a nine-plus-million-dollar project where Sean... Yeah. Nine-plus-million-dollar project, a backup source of water, because right now, if a car hits one of the four pump stations along Cave Creek Road, we are out of business in water. So that is a high priority with us, is getting a secure water system. What I say about the water is, number one is safety. We've got to have safe water. That's the top priority. Number two is reliability. It has to be on. And number three is cost. And unfortunately, we've got to pay what it costs to run the system. We're never going to have a real efficient water system because we're spread all over the county. We've got 37 square miles in town, and we have big lots and lots of lines and lots of little pump stations because we're hilly. We have lots of little scattered around. So it'll never be cheap, but we want to be cost-effective and doing it as well as we possibly can. One of the really good things that we learned Monday night, and I have to thank the Vice Mayor for taking the lead on this project, is water banking. We were told at the council meeting, excuse me, Tuesday night, that the town now has, after less than a year, we have a year's worth of water stored out in the West Valley for a dire emergency. We can't get to it, but it's out there underground, and so if things really get bad, we will have that to fall back. We also bought some water, mainly for Desert Hills, but we also bought some water last year. So the water system is well on the way towards being fixed. The other thing is, we have a drought plan now, and it goes all the way from where we are today down to a 70% drop. We don't expect to ever put that into effect, but we're planning for the future for the worst scenario. And so that drought plan is being implemented now. There are some changes to code coming, but we'll have the ability to very quickly put in measures if it gets bad with the drought. There's a good chance that there will be more curtailments next year. We have a high priority of water, and 70% of the water in Arizona goes to farms. And that farming use is on the decline very rapidly as the state grows, and that water is being diverted over into the cities and towns. And the new chip plant, that new chip plant out there, 11,000 acre-feet of water per year, which our town uses 2,000, so that's the equivalent of what? Five Cave Creeks going in out there, and they say they're water-efficient. But that's a lot of water. A lot of the effort the last two years has been on the fire and emergency system. If you've been here long, you probably saw the smoke, and if you were like me, you were evacuated, and Bruce, Bruce and I were evacuated. So fire safety and emergency services has been on the top of the burner. Out of that $12, $13 million budget, we have committed to spending $5 million of that, which is over 40% on fire and emergency, and we did it without putting in a property tax. And we saved the people in town who were paying rural metro, including some very big numbers. We saved them the fees that they were paying. So that's a real win if you're like me and a low-tax person. I look at that as probably one of the best things I've done in my career, the part that I played in it, and many of the people here on the council and in this room were critical, including Bruce and his team from the north side of town, in finding a way to squeeze that into our budget. And we squeezed it in by stopping subsidies to, for example, Desert Hills and stopped subsidies from the general fund to the water company and reducing the subsidies to the sewer system, although we can't eliminate that because it's just too far underwater. We only, last I remember, we only keep about... We only take in about 25% of the real cost it is to run that system. About the town now, of course, the Sonoran Desert, the Western vibe, the cachet, and there's their new fire department right now. They won't let me drive the truck, though. The Sonoran Desert, the Western vibe, the walkability, the open space, we have a third of the town is open space. This is Norin Desert, and we just bought some more this last year. We bought another couple parcels up on Spurcross that are high-level, so that preserved a lot of the views down there. And that was a joint project with Maricopa County and the Sonoran Desert Land Trust. So that, the three worked together very well. Luke Kautzman was instrumental in the town's part in putting that together. But that Sonoran Desert, Western vibe, and what goes on in the town, the walkability, and that's really a lot about what the rest of the meeting is about. Because my feeling is, we must protect that brand. That is the brand that brings people here who walk downtown, who come to the restaurants, who shop in town, who come to the rodeo. I think that protecting that brand, protecting the brand that Cave Creek has, where you go across the country and people know about Cave Creek. Where else in the metropolitan area can you find a town like Cave Creek? And I am committed, and I know the council's committed, to protecting what we have and keeping it and passing it on to future generations. Along those lines, we have the leaders of two organizations in town. And one of my... I may as well... The town is run by volunteers. Everybody appears to volunteer. The rodeo's a volunteer. Nina's here with the Visitors Bureau. They're volunteers. Volunteers really run this town. And I think everybody benefits from that. But I'm going to have... I asked two of those volunteer organizations to come today and just to say a few words about their organization, because I really think these are two in town that really enhance all the business in town. First of all, I see... I don't see Nina yet, but I see Mike Poppinwimber. He's the president of the rodeo and volunteer organization, and it sells out every year. So I'm going to let Mike talk a little bit, and hopefully you'll find a way to support the rodeo.
Right. Thank you, Mayor Morris. He... City, town council, excuse me.
University.
University, town council. I like that. Anyways, I just got done getting up and talking and sponsoring the Chamber breakfast this morning. I see a number of faces already there. We have our board director, Ernie, is on our board of directors, but I just want to emphasize that our board of directors now is a lot different than it has been, that we have a very progressive board, and we're about community. And I know this year for the parade, we're already about 70-some entries already, and we have like five nonprofits from Cave Creek that's in the parade, but we didn't have in the past, because we're all about community. Now, I'll go through the different agenda thing, but we talked about volunteerism. I apologize. With our manning charts this year coming up, it takes 160 volunteers to put on the rodeo, the parade, and the other activities we have that week. So we obviously need volunteers. We've gotten them in the past because the community is very strong behind this event, these events, excuse me. But one of the two things that this board really emphasized, and we'll hear more about it, is economic impact, which affects all the business people in this room, as well as the other word is fun. It has to be fun, or else you won't do it. But if we all can prosper, and we haven't done an economic impact study yet, that's something the board talked about, and we're looking at doing, maybe with the city's help and the financing of it. But...
Down, down, down.
Town. I just got done hearing Mayor Cave Creek, or Carol Freed talk, and it was all the city. Anyways, so as a community, we need to come together. This year, instead of having just four events, we have 12 different events. We brought in the Native American culture, which I think is a very big culture to bring into the Cave Creek area. We have our pageant, which we just finished. We have a rodeo queen and teen queen. And I want to emphasize, if you have any event at your business establishment, please reach out to the rodeo. The queens are there to help you promote your business. That's a service they do. They have to do so much, so many hours of community service. So please, if you do that in your business, reach out to the rodeo to help you there. Also, the events with the parade starting on the 18th, we have the parade, we have the mutton busting that afternoon. Then on Wednesday, we have the Crazy Horse Foundation auction up at the Mountain View Pub. And then, of course, Thursday, we... First year for All Bulls All Night. Trust me, if you haven't been to an event where it's All Bulls All Night, you won't be sitting back in your seat. You're on your edge of a seat. It's a great show. Okay? And then we have our regular rodeo on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And then, of course, Sunday morning, we have the Cowboy Church. It should be a great event. If you haven't been to the Cowboy Church, I know some people are very active in it. You should please come on out just to experience. It's free. So, okay. Well, depends when the offering goes around, I guess. So with all that being said, I know I only had like five minutes, and I kind of talked too long, but I just want to emphasize that the rodeo is a community event. The parade is the largest community event that Cave Creek puts on, and we want to make it bigger, and we have a great city staff, which we've already met.
Ow.
Thank you. I apologize. Town, okay? To make it even better, whether we change direct... Unfortunately, the staff here has been great in trying to take it to a different level. Okay? So with the community behind it, then the rodeos, of course, the volunteers, we still haven't filled in our manning chart yet, but 160 people is what it takes to put all these events on. Is there any questions about the rodeo? Yes, sir?
All right. If we donate our time... I don't... Do you want to hear this voice? I have a great voice for radio, right? And I have a great face, not for TV, but for radio. All right. So I am going to join your team, right? Do... You sound like you're doing too much. Now, if we donate our time, can we do just one event? Because I don't want to do, like, every day, be with you. I like you. Sounds like you like the city. I like town. Mayor, I've got a question for you.
Shouldn't have given him the microphone.
I know. I'm like, don't give me the mic. Let's do this. I also, we're opening a business across the street, Caves Horse. Hopefully, God willing, it will work. With that said, do you know how many people you need in a town to make a city? Home now. You're the mayor? 50,000. Found that out from the town of Queen... The town of Maricopa, they became a city at 50... I think it's 50 or 55,000. Let's do some research on that, guys. Home now.
Well, thank you, and now I know. I'm glad I belong to a town. Okay. Yes. So, to answer your question, no. If you volunteer just one shift, whatever you're... If you go online or website, okay, if you see what you want to do, maybe volunteer in the back pens, you don't have to clean the stalls, just to help out back there, okay? Or the VIP area, or security, parking, or even a marshal, well, parade marshal, not part of the city marshal, parade marshal for the committee. Just pick what you like, and then we'll contact you. If you just did one shift, that's great. Just to be able to participate. Bless you. Okay. For the town of Cave Creek. All right. Yes, Ernie?
Go into what we give back to the community as far as, so people know that we're not just an organization that's after our own. In particular, the financial...
Pull that over.
In particular, the financial outlay that we have this year in the grounds themselves, which I think is a huge step forward for the town of Cave Creek.
Yes. Our mission, thanks, Councilman Bunch, that our mission is to be, support the community in charitable donations and develop the rodeo grounds. So this past year, we have new pens, new chutes, a value of about $160,000, okay, that was paid for by the rodeo. We are a 501(c)(3). The skybox is gone. If you get out there, Mother Nature didn't work well with it, and it had to be tore down. Okay? So we do not have a skybox this year. But with our strategic plan, each year, we give so much to charities. I think in the last four years, it's been over $100,000 that we give into local charities, okay? And our other strategic plan is to redevelop and to work with the city on that skybox. Because everything we do, we want to, what we call, and I know Bob understands this, Mayor Morris, excuse me, return on investment, okay? What we do, we need to make sure we're going to put more stands up. How long is it going to take before we get our money back? If we put a new skybox up, how many seating or VIPs that pay for that skybox once we put it up? So this board, right now, we had seven. We're up to nine because we're doing a lot of things. With our strategic plan, by next year, we should be up to 11 people on this board because we are doing more things. Okay? Ernie, was that anything?
No, just... I just thought it was pretty impressive, the 160 grand that we put into the community for the town, for the grounds themselves. That's a big deal.
Right. And we'll give more. The more we make, the more it goes into the city as far as developing those grounds. Okay? You're not... You're not... Yeah.
Of course, the rodeo needs sponsors too. And so if you have any ID you might want to sponsor, you get your name... There's all sorts of different levels to sponsor, so I really encourage you to get ahold of the rodeo. If you can't volunteer, maybe you want to sponsor something, please do that. It brings a lot of people to town and people... I worked security where I was taking tickets. I was amazed that people come here from Europe and go to our little rodeo as part of the tour. It really is a worldwide event in many cases. I was doing all that bragging about the fire department, and I made one mistake. I didn't introduce the fellow who started it up for us. Jim Ford, I apologize. That was the most seamless business activity I've ever been at. We just go do this... We had to write the checks, but he did it. And he did it for Scottsdale before, so we really have some expertise on the rodeo. We have another volunteer organization in town that really has a direct daily effect on you, and that is the Visitors Bureau. And Nina Spitzer is here today to tell you a little bit about that. Can I trust you with the microphone?
Promise, no karaoke. Thank you. Good morning, everybody, and thank you, Mayor Bob, for inviting me to here. And wow, this is wonderful. What a turnout. I'm excited. Yes, one of the things I enjoy most doing is volunteering for the town. Many of you probably receive the Cave Creek Corner Newsletter that I do monthly, and I'm also the coordinator over at the Tourism Bureau. I don't have a business of my own, but I love this town. I've been here for over 20 years, and I love all our businesses. And I, as well as the 28 other volunteers that work over at the Tourism Bureau, love, love promoting our businesses. We get, right now during season, we're getting people from all over the country, from all over the world, countries coming in that sound like, wow! And I want you to know, it's a free service of the town of Cave Creek for you guys, for us, you know, for you merchants. So please, take advantage of us. Our location is just south of Cave Creek Road on Hidden Valley Drive, like you're on your way to the food bank, just north of the water tank. And it's a beautiful new location. It's a nice size. We have local art on the walls. So do come in if you haven't been there yet. And all you need to do to participate, and we have some of these forms by Carla, right? Yeah? Is fill out a form so we know whose items are on the wall, and bring in your rec cards. It's this shape that goes into the plaques that we... The spaces that we have. And that's it. Face-to-face promotion with visitors for no charge, and we love all of you. So please take advantage. Come on in and come in and see us. This year, Mike Parade Mike, this is the first time that the Tourism Bureau will have an entry in the parade, and we're really excited about that. And so, yeah. Over at the desk, also, our business cards, if I didn't happen to get one to you. And questions? Anybody have any questions about the Tourism Bureau?
Nina, are you having your hospitality tour this year?
Not this year. Yeah.
You can still describe it, because I'm sure it'll happen again.
Last year, we did a concierge tour and had, oh, concierge representatives from all over the valley. We rented, and this was all supported, the town was wonderful, supporting us on this. And we rented a 20-passenger bus and spent the whole day driving the concierge group around town, telling them all about our town, all about our merchants. Just a wonderful way for them to get to know Cave Creek, because, you know, guys, Cave Creek is a hidden gem. There are people living in the valley that don't know we exist up here, and honestly, that's still the truth. And so getting the word out so that they can come up and visit us and enjoy everything you guys have to offer is what it's all about. And over at the Tourism Bureau, we enjoy what we do in helping to promote you guys. Any other questions?
Question?
Yeah.
Who supports the Bureau's...
County Cave Creek. Yeah. You know, my boss is right there. Are you, Luke? And it's been wonderful that the town, anytime we have any needs at the Tourism Bureau, the town is right there with whatever it is that we need to make us be better over there, and we thank them for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. She's been doing this a long time. Very, very well. So we're going to break up in a few minutes, but I have two more issues on here. We're going to give the chance to people on council to say something if they'd like to, if they have something they'd like to bring up about the town or about business. But I'd like you to consider supporting both the rodeo and the Visitors Bureau. They're really community assets that help all of us, and so support them. Rodeo's going to sell out again this year, I'm almost sure. So longer term, this is one, the real reason you're here, consider organizing. Many of you don't attend town council meetings. A lot of times, nobody attends a council meeting. But I hope, I hope, see that the Cave Creek-specific merchants, merchants, consider organizing for a couple reasons. One is to have an impactful voice in town hall. We have a lot of codes. We have codes for dark skies. We have codes for signage. We have, we have codes for other things. We have problems with water and sewer, all those things that you deal with, and we hope that you'll weigh in on those issues and other issues that you might have in town. One thing, so we know what you think. I have never had in my time, I'm trying to think of time as council, but I know for mayor, I've never had anybody from business say, hey, there's this problem going on in town. Oh, there's one person in the room that did... Where is she? One person, okay? Ellen, where are you? Ms. Ellie? Oh, there she is. She's hiding back there. But if you've... Please bring issues up. We're here to serve the town, the volunteers, the town staff. So become active. I hope, I'd really like to see another merchants organization. I'll tell you flat out. We had one years ago, it put on events and parades in town, and it died out. I'd love to have something like that happen again that could represent the business interests, and organize other events that benefit everyone in town. That rising tide will lift all boats. If we continue to build the brand in town and to have a place that people around the world want to visit, it's going to help everybody. Now, the last part of my little talk here is issues on the horizon for merchants. Pedestrian safety is a huge issue in town. We just had a meeting with the Maricopa County Association of Governments here, talking partly about pedestrian studies. We have an incident of, high incidence of pedestrian accidents in town, and we're going to do some things to solve that problem. We have to. Safety is the top priority. And it was when we put the fire department in, and it is on pedestrian safety and traffic safety, too. Traffic enforcement is the next one. There's too much speeding in town. We have a difficult time getting the sheriff department to enforce that. They've got some issues with regard to quirks and all that kind of stuff, and my advice to them, that's your problem. Go fix it. We just want to have the enforcement in town. The average speed in town needs to drop, especially on Cave Creek Road, which is where these real safeties. I don't know of any other streets in town that have a safety issue, but Cave Creek Road does. I'm sorry? Well, where we have a record of accidents, it's all done with data, and the data, we have verified accidents on Cave Creek Road, and that's kind of what I'm the... I'm an engineer. I just look at data. The next thing is the legislature. In their wisdom, they've decided that to propose a bill that hasn't passed yet, it's not the governor's office. bill that hasn't passed yet, it's not the governor's office, that would reduce and prohibit sales tax on food for home consumption. It's not restaurant food, but it's food for home consumption. So it'd be Walmart. Walmart's here today, by the way. Welcome. And that, that's where the fire department comes from. And my message to the state legislatures was it's not a tax cut, it's a tax transfer. I don't know how we pay for this. You can't spend 44, $5 million out of a $12 million general fund. You got to have some money from somewhere. And if they cut into that, then we've got to go back to work. And it, it may be that the, the answer is a, a property tax. And that takes a vote. But I didn't want to have the vote. So if you know a state legislature, tell them you're against that prohibition of sales tax on food for home consumption. Another issue that's on the horizon, we have a brand here, and we have dark skies, but many in town would like to see a dark sky designation for the town. And I think the business community, one of the reasons for this meeting is, you need to think about those things. And you're building your brand with a dark sky, because towns like Flagstaff and Sedona and Fountain Hills have that, and some other very, there's only a dozen or so, 20s, 20s. Six in the state, but that's the majority in the world. There's 20 in the world, something like that?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight now.
It's a big deal.
So we're going to need the business community to weigh in on that. And so think about that and think, once again, think about organizing and getting active in the things that affect your business. Finally, the thing that, I mean, everyone's heard about the water companies and deferred maintenance. And we had so, so much work. And Sean has, has been the impetus behind that. Sean Cruz-Weisner, the water, here's the fellow that has gotten us out of the ditch on that. Road maintenance, we're in a ditch, too. Literally. The roads, if you came down the Schoolhouse Road or other places, the roads need a lot of work. We've got eight miles of dirt roads in town still. The EPA does not like dirt roads, because our area is out of compliance on dust, a PM10. So we are crossing our fingers. We don't have to do something, but we've got to keep the roads maintained. And that, so much money has gone into the water companies in the past. We can see the, the light at the end of the tunnel on the loans that originally set those water companies up. That's another five to seven years out. But we've got to do some work on our roads in town. And that's going to be one of the key issues in this upcoming budget. So the first thing I'm going to do here is give the, the rest of the meeting here, we're going to have, I'm going to give the council members a chance to say something they'd like to. We're going to have a short session of general questions. If they're general questions that everybody's interested in, please think of those, and we'll have some opportunity to ask a few of those. And then we're going to, we're going to break up at the end of the meeting. We have refreshments here, and the council and staff will be in the room. And I urge you, if you have specific things for your business or, or specific ideas, you don't want to bring up the general room, to go find those, though, most of the staff is in this area over here, go find those individuals and talk to them, and, and let's open the lines of communication. So before I start the general question session, I'm going, just going to pass the, this down the, or let, everyone's got a speaker. So anybody on council who'd like to bring something up or add to the conversation, I invite you to do that this time.
Sorry. We can just introduce ourselves. Well, okay. Let's just start that way. So I'm Dusty Rhodes. I'm newly elected councilman. What I would like to see out of this meeting is have you communicate with us. We're not mind readers. If you can tell us what issues you're worried about, and what things we can do to help, in a general sense, drive your business, drive people to your businesses, we can do it as long as it's not for a specific business. If it's parking is an issue, where you're in the town core, let us know. There are things we can do to maybe ameliorate parking. So unless you communicate with us, we just don't know.
Good morning, Tom McGuire. See a lot of familiar faces out there, others I hope to become more familiar with. We've been joking about the difference between a town and a city. And what we want to have is the kind of community that one sees in a town. We want to be economically successful, but we want the town to continue to grow with a feeling of ownership of the businesses and the community, and to bring those two together. That's what we're here for.
Well, some of y'all might know me. I kind of sat in this middle seat up here for about six years and on this dais for almost 18 now. And my philosophy's always been, as far as the government and businesses, we need to get out of your way and let you do what you do the best, and we'll all be, we'll all be better off for it. I still believe
He's a crowd pleaser. I love it. My name's Paul Elkema, and I'm new on the council as well. And my stuff is about preserving what we have here in this little community. So if you have thoughts about that, if you own a building in this town that could become a local landmark, I want to hear from you so we can get that bronze plaque with your history and that QR code that says, this is important to the iconic quality of Cave Creek. It's a very special place, and I think you all know that. Appreciate it.
Good morning, and thank you all for being here. We're very happy to see this turnout. We do believe that it's really important for us to continue to build our relationships with our local merchants, because we rely on you just as much as you rely on us for keeping this town beautiful and clean and safe. I ran for council in 2018, and this is not a campaign pitch. It's just a little bit of background, because I worked in the water business for 20 years. And I realized that we weren't protecting our supply enough. And so four years later, we were able to accomplish water banking, which is preserving our excess water for the future. I also was a communications director, and I'm really thoroughly convinced that we need to improve our external outreach with all of you and with the community back. So I participate a lot on our local Cave Creek infamous bulletin board on the politics page, because that's mostly where our information belongs. And I think that's a really good way of letting our community know the kinds of issues that are before this council, and the, and the decisions that we're making, and how they impact this community, you know, either positively or negatively, that we need to work on. So my two areas of primary concern are water, the water supply, protecting our water supply for the future, and making sure that people know who we are and what we're doing. And so if you see my posts, and the Sonora News is here, too. We're grateful for the coverage that they give this town. It's really important for people to know how and why we make the decisions that we're making. So if you see my name on Facebook, it's telling you what we're doing and why.
Good morning. My name is Tom Auger. I'd like to yield my time back, Mr. Chair, and get the microphone on that side of the audience in the gallery. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for coming. This is very exciting for me that everybody's in the room. And my understanding is that you're going to break up, maybe a few questions, and then you're going to break up into smaller groups. And that's fine. But I suggest that everybody here, everybody doesn't know each other, all business owners, I would like to know the names of the people who are here, who showed up, took time out of their business. Tell everybody what the name of their business, so that we all know who's here, as opposed to a couple of questions and then break out. Is that okay?
Does everybody want that?
Yes.
It's going to take some time.
That's good.
All right. Well, we'll start here with the newspapers. If you would, please. What's for lunch?
Happy Thursday, everybody. Bob Hessel gets her City Sun Times. 20 years, and still at it. Is a blessing.
How's it going, everybody? My name is Nico Russo. I'm Carlos's business partner here. We have a friend up in Cave Creek, and I'll just pass along to him.
Hi, Carlos Marquez, a friend of Cave Creek and Frontera Construction.
Rickstall Hideaway Grill and Road House.
Mark, I'm with him.
Tiffany went from the Buffalo Chip Saloon in Cave.
Travis went Buffalo Chip.
Sophie Heiner, the Donkeys of the Art. We are non-for-profit. Sophie Heiner, and I run a non-for-profit for equine assisted services. It's a unique program. And we work with standout sized donkeys.
My name is Deborah Lay. I'm the assistant director at the Desert Foothills Library.
Bruce Arlen, founder of Cave Creek Dark Sky Initiative. I hope we can all talk some time.
Amber Giza, one of the salary members of management at Walmart in Cave Creek. Store manager is Opamaka. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it today, but I'm glad to meet all of you.
I'm Deborah Marker. We're right around the corner here and moved here about a year and a half. And I
Andy Short, the GM at Rancho Mianas Golf Club. This is Missy, our admin department, and Carolyn, our head professional.
Hi, everybody. Bart Indian Village.
Hi, everyone. My name is Gail Garrett. I'm a licensed massage practitioner here. I've over 30 years. My office, I've been here in Cave Creek 13 years. My office is located off Hidden Valley, right behind local Johnny's.
Morning. Good morning, everyone. This is Lulu at Lulu's Cow Dump.
Good morning, everybody, and glad to meet the new council people. George Pingator with Desert Foothill Gardens up on Cave Creek Road and Art and Stone that's under construction right now.
Good to meet the council people as well. I liked this gathering. This is excellent. My name is Farza Mapshur. I'm a commercial property owner in the town.
Mike McQuiggin, Renee McQuiggin, and Luke Stuckey with Carefree Spirits Distillery.
Actually, it's Jake Stuckey.
Kaylin Flugel with Old Glory Barca Shop.
Hey, guys. Chad Brandfast with Rare Earth Gallery.
Donna CC, Arizona Horseback Adventures. That's the horseback riding business at the Undiscovered Crossroads.
Taylor Robert with Extreme Arizona, the ATV watercraft runs the business.
Ricky with Carefree Consignment, too.
Mike Poplimer, I have two hats on right now. Of course, the Cave Creek Rodeo, but I'm also the Kwanian that oversees the operation of the Kwan's marketplace.
Don Crowder, Arizona Territorial Met, up at State Village Village. I make coins.
John, John Otterson, Local Johnny's, and I'm here with, for my crew, my lovely wife.
Brooke Dallas with Big Earl's Grease Heat and Earl's Old Time Candy Shop.
Hi, I'm Miss Ellie. I own Equine Motion Therapy, which is bodywork for horses. And this is my husband, Steve Ellie. You know, it's almost been a year. We also own Infamous Pool Care, and we own the Cave Creekers infamous bulletin board, which you may have heard of, and the politics board. And I would really like to commend you guys for reaching out to the businesses. I think it's fabulous. And who wants to do the Merchants Association?
Good morning. I'm Bo Bryant. My wife, Jen, and I own Cowboy Pizza Company and Brunch Kitchen and Cocktails.
Hey, my name is Mike Edwards. I run Handlebars, the golf cart taxi company.
I'm Julian with Janes.
Carol Perry. I have Laughing Glass Studio down in Old Suarawest neighborhood for 30 years.
Julie Goldammer. I'm a residential associate broker and a closet artist, and I live behind
Karen Teets, TNT Barrier Service and Supply. I'm also from the Suarawest area. Hi, Bruce. Hey, y'all. I'm Melissa Owens from Sonora News. Just started there a few years ago. So me and my husband, who does the graphics and all the news, and Dave.
Hi, everybody. Paul Rarick from Cave Creek Cowboy Company.
Good morning, everyone. Matt Malley, my wife and I, Yvonne. We run NY Racing Stables. We breed, race, and raise their breaths.
Good morning, and thanks for having me. I'm Mike Wilson. I'm the store manager here at Lowe's.
I'm Mary Lou. I'm with him.
Jeff Beach. What am I? Still trying to figure that out. I'm starting a new business called Scape Source. We'll see if it works. Hopefully it does. I got a few other businesses. George, it's great to see you, brother. That's it, I guess, right? You guys are great, by the way. I love you, Mayor Bob. This is Z.
I'm Carrie Direct, town manager.
Hello, I'm Lisa Schrader. I am the owner of Grateful Grasshopper. I know it's been a slow start, but I'm now open.
Paul Incherry Marina, we own Pritley Pier Plaza.
I'm Mike Jones. I own Desert Dweller Motorcycle Company.
Jared, Cave Creek Welding.
Brian Conkle, Carefree Floors in Cave Creek. Fernando Moltenaro with Pretablo.
Well, somebody's got to be last. I'm Bob Kite, a commercial and residential property owner since 1984, before incorporation. Thank, thank you all. Bruce, that was a good idea. I was skeptical. I was skeptical. Hand the mic run over as a, I was taught not to do.
I just have a quick question.
You bet.
Anything being done about the odor, odor that comes when you get to the top of Cave Creek Road coming up the hill?
Yes. You might have noticed, we've actually been doing some sewer cleaning in the town core. So, and we are sure, we're, we're actually going to start an odor study up in that area. So we're not sure why, because the lines are clear downstream of that. And when we did some work last year, the odor seemed to have gone away, but they seem to have come back. So we're actually going to bring a consultant in to evaluate what actually is going on there and what we can do. So we've been more proactive with trying to clean the lines. People might have noticed, the other week, we actually did clog up traffic a little bit on the north side of Cave Creek Road as we're cleaning that main sewer line. So we're trying to be more proactive with that stuff. But that specific location is one that it's perplexing us. We're going to bring an outside consultant and help us clarify what we can do.
Now, if, if you really want some excitement, you come to town council me. We get a lot of pictures from inside the sewer. You think I'm kidding? We, we see the before and the after. We have done a lot, and Sean's group has done a tremendous amount towards increasing the reliability and the way everything flows. So, so now we're in the question time. So we have some other questions that might be. Yeah. And, and we're going to have some food here in just a second. Other questions that people want to have of general interest.
I think it's a lot to everybody, water, right? I mean, everybody, water's a big issue for us. Sean and I have talked at length, but the price increase, I know it is coming. I've seen all the calculations, so on and so forth. Probably doesn't affect everybody as much as us. So what kind of price increase are we looking at next year, year after, so on and so forth?
Well, it's a pretty hefty price increase this year, because the, the town can no longer, with the fire department, the town can no longer afford to subsidize it. But we've done, and we lost a tremendous amount of revenue when the carefree customers went to their system. That alone is worth 20 bucks a month on the average number of accounts we have. So that was a huge hit.
So that's what I'm saying. I know you lost, whatever it was, Sean told me, 1.2 million in revenue to the town of Carefree.
Right.
Because you lost all these people. So you have to gather that cost somehow.
Right.
Keep operating. So is the town of Cave Creek's going to So is the town of Cave Creek's going to pay that one point two on top of what we're paying, but are there going to be incremental increases over the years?
Well, this is the big year. This is a year that we had to take all the actions to deal with the fire and emergency issues, which is a life-saving issue. There, I think it's two percent increases as we go out. So last year, when we did the rate study, council was actually authorized us, and we have it, we can have it, I think it's on the website, but it's, we can send some more information out. We actually have six years' worth of rate increases. This year in Cave Creek, I think the average was about fifteen, twelve percent, I believe it was, and then the next got subsequent years, it's about five percent. That is overall, so it depends if you're a low-water user, you actually won't have that much for rate increases, it's more the mid to high-water users. So we actually do have that information. In our case, Andy, we can talk, we've talked about, another thing I can offer up to businesses, we're trying to increase our metering in the town core to get better and more accurate information to the customers, so you can see information more closely to the actual usage. So you can actually understand if you have a leak before we actually send you a bill six weeks later, and that leak's been active. And the other thing we're trying to do is, we can talk, because the way water policy's set up is, we can talk, if you do not have a separate meter for, say, outdoor irrigation, we can talk about that, which allows for things like separation of your sewer usage. Commercial customers are charged for sewer usage. You get first ten thousand gallons, you're not charged on for water usage, but ten thousand gallons, we charge you a proportional share of that water. We assume it's going back to the sewer system. So if you don't have a separate meter for your outdoor irrigation, if you have one, we can actually talk about that and get one installed and separately meter you. So we're trying to be proactive to help with the customers, but the cost of the operation has gone up, the cost of the raw cap water continues to go up, the cost of our operation goes up, just staffing, chemicals and everything, and the rate study is in place. I believe the next few years, I think it's about a five percent increase per year.
Twelve this year, five?
Yeah, and that's an average, so different tiers, so we'd have to have a discussion on, if you want to, our staff can talk to you about specifically your account information and what that impact might be to you.
Okay, thanks.
Carol?
I'm just interested in what we think the actual hit will be, the state legislature passes the ban on sales tax on grocery.
The actual hit, if they pass that ban, is one and a half million dollars per year on a twelve million dollars, so it's budget. So we'll have to see. We've been pretty innovative in the past at finding ways to not charge as much as things are costing, to be more efficient. But that may be too big a hit. Other questions?
I still do still have a question, but I do want to ask that to everyone. So our store will be having a remodel, start on March twenty-sixth, and grand reopening is expected to be June thirtieth. If you guys are interested in attending and having booths out to advertise your business, you guys are more than welcome. Please communicate with us. Yes, Walmart, sorry, Walmart. And then even the rodeo queens, if they want to come for that, we will be doing a ribbon cutting. Again, that will be June thirtieth.
I think it's wonderful that Walmart's here. I think you're the first person I've ever had at a town meeting, so I really appreciate you coming. Other questions? So there are no issues in town, huh? Okay, so we have snacks here, and we have all these people in the room who run the town. And so we'd urge you to come up and say hello, talk about whatever you'd like to, and I really want to appreciate and say I appreciate and thank you for being here today. Thank you.